The public hearing sponsored by, facilitated by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary is hereby convened. On the agenda is Bill Number 185 Dash Thirty-Three, which is relative to establishing an expedited administrative process to identify land takings by agencies, to address claims and determine appropriate settlements relative to property expropriated for public purposes by the government of Guam without just compensation. And we do have the sponsor of the legislation who has joined us this evening, and I will give him an opportunity to be able to provide his brief opening comments. In compliance with the open government law, with the information to the community, the initial notice for this particular public hearing was sent out to the stakeholders on the first of October, and also printed in the Pacific Daily News on the first of October, with the second notice being released by the committee on the sixth of October, and likewise the second print within the Pacific Daily News on the sixth of October. I'd like to welcome and thank my colleagues for joining us this evening. To my immediate left is Senator Espoldon. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us. To his immediate left is Senator Nerissa Underwood. Thank you again, Senator. And to her immediate left is Senator Dennis Rodriguez, who is the sponsor of Bill Number One Eighty-Five. As I invite the sponsor of the legislation to provide comments, I would like to please invite the following individuals to grab a seat in the front. We have Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero, Mr. John Elau, Pastor Cliff Shoemaker, and Ms. Helen Gumatauta. Once again, if I can invite the following individuals to join us up front, Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero, Mr. John Elau, Pastor Cliff Shoemaker, and Ms. Helen Gumatauta. And as we allow you all to take your seats, I would like to invite the sponsor of Bill Number One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, Senator Rodriguez, to provide his opening comments. Senator?
Hafadeh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for all being here this afternoon. Just briefly, Bill One Eighty-Five, the specific intent and focus of this legislation is to remedy the past unresolved land takings initiated by our government directly pursuant to which the public has collectively benefited. And there's really six components of this legislation that I'd like to just be able to highlight so that it's absolutely clear on what the intents are of this piece of legislation. The first is to mandate that all agencies and instrumentalities of the government of Guam determine whether any land in its inventory, possession, or which is being utilized for public purposes, has been properly acquired by due process and compensation has been provided. This would remove or greatly alleviate a great portion of the onerous burden of perfecting a claim from being solely borne by the landowners. The second is to move forward the date for the filing of a claim for compensation for five years from the date of enactment of this act, or until 2021, whichever is later, without which numerous outstanding claims for land takings would be precluded. And to mandate that agencies pay the cost for investigating and confirming such claims. This has been otherwise unduly onerous and expensive burden to reperform by landowner seeking compensation for an action initiated by the government. The third component is with the validation or confirmation of an inverse condemnation taking, the landowner would then be notified by the agency for his or her right to institute an action for inverse condemnation. The landowner and government can then more readily move forward with the process of determining true market value and appropriate compensation. This process would place a reasonable portion of the burden of validating or confirming a claim upon compensation. The fourth component provides for the administrative adjudication of a claim by an agency to which a validated claim has been filed, and sets performance timelines by which the agency to which the claim was filed shall respond to the claim and determine fair market value and the compensation due to landowner inclusive of interest. The fifth component establishes a Fifth Division in the Superior Court of Guam for Land Division, a court of record, intended to expedite judicial process for claims for government taking and condemnation within Superior Court of Guam. And the fifth component of this legislation, the Act recognizes that each land-taking case is different, and the mandate is provided by the Act to preclude a broad class action suit without landowner consent, thereby assuring there is individual consideration of the unique parcels affected unless otherwise deemed appropriate by the court. And so this piece of legislation, Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, is really a piece of legislation we resurrected from the previous term when I introduced Bill Two Thirty-Nine Dash Thirty-Two. We've worked as much as we could with the stakeholders involved, with Attorney General's office as well, and I believe at this point in time that we are ready to move forward in addressing this very important issue. For decades, this has been an unresolved matter, and I know that this issue is, you know, will certainly have a large cost involved. But just like any public debt, this is an issue that must be resolved. And, you know, this piece of legislation is, will extend equity to our landowners whose properties were taken, and really making that recognition that the government must now make good on what, you know, it has done to the landowners in taking of their property. So I look forward to this hearing, look forward to pursuing this, the legislative process, and finally resolving this longstanding issue. So just my seat, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. I'd like to also welcome Vice Speaker Cruz and Senator Morrison. Thank you very much, Senators, for joining us this evening. Mr. Leon Guerrero, if I can ask you to pull the mic and identify yourself for the record and proceed, please.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero, and I'm here today as a victim of the government that has had land taken from my family to widen San Vittori's Road. We still haven't been compensated for that taking. I'm also here today as a victim of the government that has taken land from my family for the construction of Southern High School. We still have not been compensated for that land. I know many other people who are in a similar situation as our family is, who've had land taken, and they too have been waiting decades for payment from the government. We feel discriminated against when we look at the actions this government has taken with the land that was taken for the creation of the Lejeune landfill. Not only did the government pay those landowners promptly, paying them ahead of all of us who have been waiting decades for payment, they've also been very generously compensated for their land, and that is a compensation that is paid for by those of us who have lost our lands through the taxes. It's a good thing that the legislature is attempting to level the playing field, because this has been a burden that not just our family, but many families have had to bear as we lost the economic opportunity we could have had through either use of the land, sale of the land, or compensation for the land. And all that we ask is that our claims be handled as expeditiously and as generously as those of the Lejeune landowners. And I believe that this bill will put a course in place that ordinary people can follow and hopefully get their claims resolved as fast as those of the Lejeune landowners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guerrero.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I may, I'm sorry to interject, but I saw Vice Speaker Ted Nelson here. I want to just be able to recognize him. He was really the champion of this piece of initiative back in the Twenty-Second Guam Legislature, and him being here really is, I appreciate it. And, sir, we're here today to ensure that what you've started, we're going to complete and finally try to resolve. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez, and thank you and welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker Nelson. Mr. Elau?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Senators. My name is John Elau. I'm the Vice President of JMI Edison, and I'm here to testify in favor of Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three. Like Mr. Leon Guerrero is a victim, however, us at JMI Edison, we are, our basic human rights are being taken away. Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I call my assistant to assist?
Yes, please. Proceed.
I'm just going to show eight pictures, and I'm not going to do a deft-by PowerPoint presentation, so just bear with me. The road is the Ton Vicente Leon Guerrero Road, and as you can see, our road is being blocked by those two big blocks. On the left side, you will see the New Covenant Church. On the right side is our building. So go ahead, please. And if you can see the two-story building or the three-story building on the right, that is the Baba Corp., and those two signs in the front of them are "For Sale" signs. So go ahead, please. And on the left side, that is how we're currently entering the, our property, is Baba Corp. is allowing us access to their, through their land. And I believe that's the church, too. That's how they're accessing, and the residence. So go ahead, please. And that's the name of the street, Ton Vicente Leon Guerrero, with a stop sign. I think the road has been in existence for approximately fifty years now. And there's a bigger picture of the block, which nobody can move, I think. Okay. And that's the backside where there's, go ahead, please. There's a resident there, a house, go ahead, and some thin houses, and also the apartment. So we're a small community. There's two businesses in that area, and the church, and also a couple of residents, and some are thin houses, too. Okay. And that's it for the pictures. Like as I was saying, our residents, they're also in the back, so I also met some of them when we were at the New Covenant Church meeting, and some of them are old already. And so on a daily basis, our basic rights as a human being are being taken away. Our right to work. Our right to worship. Our right to operate a business, which Gov. Guam gave us a business license. Our right to emergency services. Our right to live. I mean, what if there's a fire? And just today, there's those new defibrillators that the Guam Fire Department have. So what use are those defibrillators if they can't even get to the patient? And I really like what Mayor Gobi said in the newspaper today. Gov. Guam needs to stop dragging its feet, because it has been, so. So in conclusion, in your October nineteen session, we're asking you to please vote yes on this Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, and also give us our rights back, but also please talk to the landowners of that street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elau, for your presentation, and also for the support that you have brought to explain your situation. Pastor Shoemaker?
Good evening. I'd just like to, I'll keep this short for you guys. We've got a congregation, we've got two congregations of about five hundred people that have to access our property on a weekly basis, many times biweekly. And we have completely, if you remember the picture, we completely destroyed the Baba Corporation, that whole lot. And we appreciate their hospitality and letting us use their property temporarily. But when that property is sold, we've got no assurance that that's going to continue. When we leased the property more than fifteen years ago, we leased it on the basis of the fact that we had access to that road. I mean, we had access to the property through that road. Since then, that road has been blocked for nearly two years. We have had several encounters with everybody from the mayor's office, all the way up to higher up, and no one seems to want to do anything. And so I would just like to say that I support this bill. If this bill would in any way help us to get that road open, I am in full support, and so is our congregation.
Thank you very much, Pastor Shoemaker. Ms. Gumatauta?
Good evening, Senators, Chairman. My name is Helen Gumatauta, and I work for JMI Edison. I am a mother of four kids and working for JMI in that area. As you can see, the road is blocked, okay? For now, we are allowed access through the Baba Corporation site, but if Baba sells their property, what happens if the next tenant comes in and doesn't allow us any access through their property to get to our work? What are we going to do then? Currently, the road is blocked, like Mr. Shoemaker said, Pastor Shoemaker said, for about two years, approximately two years, and nothing has been done. I am here to support Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, hoping that something can be done to at least compensate the property owner for the use of the property currently. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gumatauta, for providing your testimony. Anyone have any questions or comments for members of the panel? Senator Rodriguez? Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony, Senator. Yes, Pastor Shoemaker, you have a follow-on comment?
One short comment.
Sure.
All of this is, this whole ordeal is over a ten-foot strip of land. I mean, it's very small, and yet it holds up commerce. Thank you.
Thank you again for your testimony, folks. I can invite the following individuals: Nelson Rodriguez, Attorney, Mr. Rodriguez, you just wanted to sign in? Okay. Thank you very much for highlighting that. Ms. Dana Gutierrez, Mayor June Blas, if she's in the audience, I do know that she provided written testimony. Vice Speaker Ted Nelson. Malagza Paratana Otumal. Agulamun. This is your idea, and this is...
I've been doing this for twenty-one years, so I like to see it.
Okay. Attorney Carlos Pardón. Crystal Sanchez. And Ms. Geneviel Elau. We have Okin Paris, going to provide testimony. Okay. Just for the information of everyone who's in the audience and who's watching, this particular public hearing, the committee has received testimony from Department of Land Management, so we do have that on the record. If you would like to have copies, just please proceed to the table on your left and request copies of that particular testimony. Ms. Dana Gutierrez, please.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Uggan, fellow senators. We also submitted written testimony, Senator, for the record.
Thank you.
My name is Dana Gutierrez, and I am the Director of Policy Planning and Community Relations for the Judiciary of Guam. And on behalf of the Judiciary of Guam, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to submit testimony regarding Bill Number One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, the Government Land Takings Compensation Act of 2015. Now, the judiciary's testimony on Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three is limited to the provisions of the bill creating a judicial land division court. However, the judiciary notes that it worked proactively with Senator Rodriguez's staff to address due process concerns regarding the land division court, and the judiciary also acknowledges that it is commendable that an expedited process is being proposed in the hopes of settling decades of property disputes between the government of Guam and private landowners. Recently, the Guam Legislature proposed and approved legislation providing funding for an additional judicial officer or magistrate judge at the judiciary. Because of the additional resources provided by the Guam Legislature, the judiciary is prepared to implement the procedures necessary to establish an expedited judicial process to address government land takings and condemnation actions, and the funds provided will allow the judiciary to provide the speedy and efficient legal process for government land takings and inverse condemnation cases contemplated by the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, and if the judiciary can provide further information about the above testimony, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gutierrez, for your testimony, Senator. Mr. Espoldon?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Uggan and members of the committee. I am Deputy Attorney General Carlos Espoldon, appearing on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General on Bill One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three. The Office of the Attorney General understands and appreciates the government's obligation to fairly compensate property owners for land taken for public purposes, and we agree with the intent of Bill One Eighty-Five to address past wrongs and ensure persons whose lands were taken to be afforded opportunity to seek proper redress. However, while we agree with some provisions of the bill, we do have concerns with others. I will not go through the provisions of Bill One Eighty-Five, as Senator Rodriguez has already done so, but I will comment on some of the respective provisions. First, we support the creation of a land claims compensation fund that will be used to pay settlements to landowners whose land was taken by the government for public purposes through inverse condemnation. It is our experience that delays often occur because cases cannot be settled or an award paid without an appropriation by the legislature and an allotment of funds by BBMR as required by law. The creation of adequate funding of a land claims compensation fund would hasten the settlement process, because funds would be budgeted and appropriated to pay inverse condemnation claims. Second, although we appreciate the bill's qualified preclusion of class actions in inverse condemnation cases, we would recommend instead an unqualified prohibition on class actions in these cases. The current language of the bill would still allow class actions in certain situations where members must elect to be included in a class. Our recommendation for an outright prohibition on class actions is consistent with the general rule that courts do not usually consider inverse condemnation suits as appropriate for class actions. The bill itself acknowledges some of the main reasoning for this proposition in Propose Section Eleven Three Eleven Dash One B Two of Title Seven GCA, where it mandates deference to the dual notions that, one, there is no common issue of law or fact on behalf of all landowners subject to inverse condemnations due to the unique nature of each parcel of land; and, two, that the damages in inverse condemnation cases are not typical to each and every landowner and must be calculated on a separate basis. That language is actually included in the bill. So in sum, it is our position that land cases are unique and should be considered on a case-by-case basis. On the issue of extending the time to file claims for inverse condemnations on takings after July first, nineteen ninety-four, we have no objection to increasing the time period for filing from four years to five from the time of taking. However, the bill appears also to reopen the time period for an additional five years for claims that have already been extinguished by the existing statute of limitations, a move that our office does not support. We also do not support shifting the burden of proof from the property owner to the government in determining whether an uncompensated taking occurred and the amount of just compensation that must, that may be owed. This is a departure from the basic principle of eminent domain law that has been recognized by the Guam Supreme Court. The principle behind the law as it stands is that no one is in a better position to know whether land was taken by the government for no compensation than the property owners themselves. Shifting the burden creates an anomaly in the law that is both unfair to the government and violates a basic principle under which our justice system has always operated when it comes to seeking redress for an injury. Another concern we have with the legislation is the addition of an agency-level administrative process for filing an inverse condemnation claim, as it may have the exact opposite results of the intent of the legislation, which is to facilitate and streamline the process of bringing and resolving inverse condemnation claims. In addition to being yet another layer in the adjudication process, it may also contribute to evidentiary issues should the administrative decision be appealed to the Superior Court. There are other issues in the bill that may be problematic. One provision requires the government to identify all government lands that may have been taken for public purposes by inverse condemnation and without just compensation. Another provision would require the government to shoulder the costs of investigating and confirming an inverse condemnation claim, including appraisals for the subject properties. Now, these matters are more appropriately addressed in full by the administration as it is, as it significantly implicates governmental capacity and financial resources. However, having noted our deference to the administration on these matters, to contribute to the discussion of both topics, we relay the following experience in recent court cases in which we have been involved. First, with respect to requiring the government to identify all lands taken by inverse condemnation, the Superior Court of Guam, in a recent inverse condemnation case, examined whether the government had fulfilled a requirement to produce an inventory under Public Law Twenty Two Dash Seventy-Three that is very similar to the one contemplated in Section Four of the bill. In that case, after receiving testimony from the then-director of Land Management, the court found that the records required to create a list that gives rise to entitlement of just compensation, quote, "do not exist," unquote. The court specifically referenced the director's representation that, quote, "even if funding and human resources were available to perform a comprehensive title exam of the entire island, the information required in Public Law Twenty Two Dash Seventy-Three could not be determined," unquote. The court went on to state an oft-quoted maxim that under Guam law, quote, "the law never requires impossibilities." On the subject of the government shouldering the costs of investigating inverse condemnation claims, including costs for appraisals, we note that in an impending inverse condemnation case, the government agency recently received a quote of between twenty to thirty thousand dollars for a just compensation appraisal from an on-island appraiser. Again, while matters of government expenditures are within the purview of the legislature and the executive administration, we provide this information to illustrate potential costs in actual cases in which we have been involved. In closing, Mr. Chair, the Office of the Attorney General reiterates its appreciation and support for the intent of the bill and for certain provisions that we believe will facilitate redress of past governmental takings. We also appreciate the opportunity to present the concerns we have with the legislation, and we stand ready to work with you, the committee, and other stakeholders to improve and strengthen the bill as it moves forward. As we did with Bill Two Thirty-Nine Thirty-Two last introduced in the previous legislature, we believe that it might be helpful if a roundtable were held on these matters where interested parties and stakeholders can discuss what are difficult and complicated matters with respect to land and inverse condemnation law. We would welcome that opportunity to participate and contribute what we can. I thank the committee for the opportunity to testify tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Attorney General Espoldon. Appreciate your testimony and your suggestion for a follow-on roundtable.
Thank you.
Ms. Duennas? I'm sure Mr. Perez is going to yield to you.
Mr. Chairman and Honorable Senators of the Thirty-Third Guam Legislature, Buenos Hafadeh. I am Lauren Carvalho Flores Duennas, a resident of Chico since birth. My family is the owner of Lot Number Seventy Twenty Three Dash One, consisting of several parcels of land with over five hundred feet of marine dry frontage. These parcels were given to me and my sister Dorothy Flores Cruz by our parents Joaquin Garcia Flores and Maria Costa Carvalho Flores, and were originally owned by our grandfather Ignacio Guerrero Flores Familian Cabeza. I support and encourage the passage of Bill Number One Eighty-Five Dash Thirty-Three, legislation to effectively and efficiently redress injustices by the federal government and later compounded and perpetrated by the government of Guam. Though I only cite the injustice perpetrated by my family, on my family, I am sure you will hear of the same plight of many whose lands were unjustly taken by these two governments in the name of national defense and public necessity. Everyone who suffered these injustices have a right to redress of their grievances, whether it be tax refunds or real estate improperly seized and held by the government. All who have been unjustly denied their rights should be afforded the opportunity to seek justice. Bill Number One Eighty-Five Thirty-Three will provide that mechanism. The road we now know as Marine Drive, prior to World War II, was used primarily by the local farming community and those who harvested copra from the coconut groves of the north, especially the Genapsen and Taragi areas. Atkins Crow, a British-owned entity, exists today because of the initial success of its copra exports. Marine Drive, after July twenty-one, nineteen... Marine Drive, after July 21, 1944, suddenly became very important as the U.S. military built the Northwest Field Runway from where General Doolittle's Raiders took off to bomb and soften Japan, a prelude to the flight of the Inola Gay over Hiroshima. After that war, through the Korean War and into the Vietnam Conflict and the development of Anderson Air Force Base, as a strategic air command installation, Marine Drive became even more important. The military decided the Marine Drive could be classified as a defense-access road, thus using the national defense rationale to justify condemning a right-of-way 100 feet in width from Anderson to a roadie peninsula to accommodate a right-of-way and utility easements for power, water, and wastewater lines. Property along that route was condemned, and the original owners compensated it a dollar each. I remember seeing a document that was filed on October 15, 1948, which stated that my grandfather was compensated a whole dollar for his land. What seems even stranger is that the property taken were only on our side, a Marine Drive, for what reason, who knows? Marine Drive's importance during the Vietnam Conflict escalated as Anderson became host to squadrons of B-52s, which carried every bomb dropped on Vietnam. Tractor-trailer caravans transfers over 25 miles from Naval Magazine to Anderson, transporting thousands of bombs to be dropped on Vietnam. By accepting the transfer, the government of Guam perpetrated the injustices of the federal government and should now accept the attendant liabilities and moral and legal obligations. The government of Guam, not too long after the takeover, expanded Marine Drive from a two-lane secondary road to a five-lane highway. I do not remember any public hearings in Chico to determine whether the people of the village favored such an expansion, even though I do know it was necessary. Travel lanes were increased, and utility poles are now dangerously close to speeding vehicles. In many areas, there are no shoulders for disabled vehicles to safely park outside the travel lanes. In reality, the government's efforts to provide for more efficient flow of vehicular traffic has turned some roads on this island into dangerous and nightmare speedways. With all this modernization, the injustices and denial of property rights since 1944 were never considered, and equal protection of the laws was denied to the original landowners. I was asked by GWA, after the expansion, to permit a wastewater line to be extended across my property to serve as adjacent lot owners. I flatly refused, noting that the issues attendant to the past taking of my family's property had not been resolved. Since the government of Guam has assumed ownership and control of Marine Drive, I consider the resolution of those past issues a responsibility and moral obligation of this government. Undoubtedly permitting that wastewater line to transfers my property would have saved the government considerable expense, and the work could have been done more quickly. But until the government owns up to its responsibilities and legal and moral obligations, I believe the landowners should stand their ground and jealously guard their property rights. In closing, I urge this legislature to pass this legislation as soon as possible. So much attention has been given to the protection of the rights of taxpayers, to their refunds, and to very expensive unfunded federal mandates. Perhaps now it is time to give some attention to righting the injustices committed by the federal government that are now being perpetrated by government of Guam. I wish to thank the ones that introduced this bill, Senator Rodriguez and the others, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you on an issue that was of great importance to my parents and continues to be a sore spot for me, my sister, and our children. I would really like to resolve this problem in my lifetime, so that my children and grandchildren will not suffer the same frustration of the injustices created by the federal and local government. Respectfully yours, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Duennas, for your testimony this evening. Mr. Perez?
Mr. Chairman and Honorable Senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature, my name is Joaquin Pangalinen Perez, a resident of San Arida. I come before you representing the family of the late Pedro Borja Pangalinen and Christina Sablon Pangalinen, our grandparents, their children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Our family supports the purpose and intent of Bill Number 185-33 and urges its expeditious passage. We believe that the bill, when enacted, will provide a legal mechanism by which longstanding injustices and inequities can be adjudicated and finally resolved. The passage and enactment of this legislation acknowledges that the government of Guam has, in fact, appropriated private property without equal protection of the laws, without due process, and without just compensation. It is also my opinion that the taking and condemnation of land by the naval government prior to and immediately after the passage of the Organic Act, supposedly for national defense purposes, was then assumed by our local government ostensibly for public necessity, and it rendered the government of Guam just as culpable as the naval government. Our grandparents and their children, originally from the village of Sumai and Apla, own tracts of land in Sumai, Apla, and Hoga. We understand, at this point in time, we do not have any recourse for redress of the injustices perpetrated on the people of Sumai and Apla, so this is not the time to discuss those issues. With the passage and enactment of this legislation, when that time comes, the mechanism for redress will be there. The people's recourse to justice will be well-established, and potential politicization can be avoided. The specific parcel of property condemned and taken by the naval government beginning as early as 1948, which my family will seek resolution for, is that area of Hoga, previously designated as Lot Number 164. In today's terms, a more timely description of the property can be given as, beginning with the Agat Community Center, south to the Mount Carmel Cemetery, and from Route 2 to the shoreline. This all encompasses the Ayat Community Center, the Sagam Besita, the Gaan Point Memorial War Memorial, War in the Pacific Memorial Park, and the Agat Wastewater Treatment Plant. Immediately after August 15, 1944, the naval government began identifying property in what they referred to as the Opera Harbor Reservation, for the establishment of what we now know as Naval Base Guam. Parcels in Agat were identified for development of housing areas for federal and military personnel and families. The infrastructure in that area was developed with underground wastewater systems, the first one on Guam, and that included the construction of the Agat Sewer Outfall, service alley running behind lots designated for individual family residences to avoid overhead electrical lines along the street, and for the regular collection of trash. Portions of this development still exist and are being utilized. Ultimately, rather than in Hoga, the naval government decided to build the housing facilities called Opera Heights in the area previously known as Base 18, and separate housing facilities for military personnel attached to the Naval Magazine. The plans to develop Agat were abandoned and the area eventually turned over to the government of Guam. The Federal District Court, in its decision and ruling, ordered that if the naval government did not use the area condemned, the properties would be returned to the original landowners. When the Navy dropped plans for a new Agat housing area, the parcels were turned over to the government of Guam, not the original landowners, as the Navy did not then have a mechanism for the return of parcels to private individuals. That situation still exists today. Thus, an naval air station was turned over to government of Guam for development of an international air terminal, for the development of the Tizan Parkway, and the development of an economic and industrial trade zone. Through the Uncentral Lands Commission, the parcels, which encompass the military family quarters along the Tizan and Halava Cliff Line, the bachelor officers quarters, the bachelor enlisted men's quarters, El Gecko enlisted men's club, the bowling alley, dispensary, and others, were all returned to the families who held title prior to 1950. The Good Shepherd Chapel was turned over to the Homeless Coalition to comply with provisions of the BRAC law. With the passage of Bill 185-33, my family will be able to pursue through legal channels the return of my grandparents' property, or just compensation, or in exchange with other government properties, so that the War in the Pacific Park, the Sagam Besita, the Community Center, and the Agat Sewer Treatment Plant can continue to exist and operate for the benefit of the Agat community. In closing, we know that this government has been very willing to borrow unbelievable amounts of money to pay tax refunds, which includes millions in unfunded federal mandates. I believe that the payment of tax refunds is a good thing, but I also think that the exacerbation of this government's fiscal ailments with the payment of unfunded federal mandates is senseless, irresponsible, and injudicious. If this government is willing to assume unbelievable debt to pay tax refunds, which admittedly belongs to the taxpayers, together with unfunded federal mandates, then to ensure equal protection of the laws for all, it should be willing to do the same thing, provide for due process, and be prepared to make reparations for the appropriation of privately-owned property. In the final analysis, our family sees the mechanism envisioned by Bill 18533 as a path by which families whose properties were appropriated can be justly compensated without the need to go through the torturous government bureaucracy. Likewise, we see the mechanism provided by this legislation as providing a legal pathway which overcomes the temptation to politicize an issue which really belongs in the courts. Duncan L. Sodoumasi for this opportunity presents my family's views on this important legislation. I congratulate the sponsors of the measure for seeking a methodology by which resolution of longstanding injustices and denial of rights can be efficiently and effectively resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perez, for your testimony this evening. Any questions from the senators on the members of the panel? If not, thank you again for your testimony this evening. If I can invite the following individuals, please: Vice Speaker Ted Nelson, Mr. Ed Elau, and Ms. Laura Sauter. If I can invite the three of you to please join us up front. Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Ted Nelson and Ms. Sauter. Ms. Sauter, if you can proceed with your testimony, please.
Hello. Ladies, come first.
Okay, thank you. My testimony is simple. I'm strongly in favor of the bill that you've proposed, for several reasons. I believe, like what Ken shared in perspective with his family, that this is so critical here on Guam, because many, many families are caught not knowing what happened to their lands. And I can share with you that this is my experience as well. There's a property that my mom and dad owned and subdivided, and there was a remnant to that property that my mother, in her probate after her death, was given to our family. We've continued to pay tax on it. I've been paying tax on this piece of property for at least 25 years. And yet, no one has been able to help guide me to find the property, okay? The property has been...I've been paying tax on it. I've gone to Revenue and Taxation and asked them to provide me with evidence that the property exists, because I've had surveys done, I've had, you know, all kinds of things done, and, you know, all kinds of measures to find the property. I've worked with land management. They say the property is in the books, it's on the map, but the government has taken this part of the property for a road, this part of the property for water access, and so on and so forth, and yet I continue to be...I continue to receive real property tax statements, and I'm told that my mother's in arrears, even though she's passed away for 13 years. And I want to preserve my mother's honor and name, and so I continue to pay the tax until my lawyer, of course, said, "Stop paying the tax until Revenue and Tax can show you that the property exists." So this is just a small example of how helpless I am, and I'm not an easily intimidated person. I've spent a lot of money trying to find the property. My mother insists that the property is there. The people who have bought the plots, you know, from the subdivision, have told me, "Loling, the government has taken the portion that belonged to your mother," because they needed to put a road in, they needed to put this in and that in, and I just don't know how to resolve the issue. So when I heard about Bill 185, and I heard the intent of the bill, I was thrilled, because it's exactly the kind of thing that folks need to resolve some of these very, you know, cloudy issues about land and about who has access to the land, who owns the land. I still haven't been able to resolve this. I was at Revenue and Tax last week, trying to get to the bottom of this, because, again, I received a bill two weeks ago telling me that my mother was in arrears, and has been in arrears for several years since I stopped paying the tax bill. So I commend all of you who have originated this bill. I commend this committee, and I urge you to please pass this bill, so that these kinds of issues can finally be resolved, not at the expense of the taxpayer. Because, you know, in my case, I've put in a lot of money to try to resolve this issue and haven't been able to get it resolved. But I just don't think that's fair. You know, I don't think that the role of government is to...the role of government is to protect its citizens and to protect the property of its citizens, not to obscure the rights, you know, thereof. So I think that my position is clearly in support of the bill, and I laud you for introducing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sauter, for your presentation. Mr. Vice Speaker, before I recognize you, if I can invite Tony and Marion Ada, who would like to join us up front. And Vice Speaker Nelson, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, let me yield to my nephewship. I wanted you to...actually, I've been going through this for 21 years and having a trauma. Right, Nelson? I yield to...
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Sure.
Tony? Mary?
Hi, I'm Tony Ada. This is my wife, Marion. We all know each other. We heard about this hearing this afternoon on the radio, Senator Rodriguez, and so I called Marion right away, said there's going to be a hearing having to do with this land situation where original landowners were compensated, right? Like the young lady earlier, is the same way. We didn't know that...it's actually her mom. We didn't know that she was continuing to pay taxes on that piece of...the property that is Route 4. You know, Route 4 goes from Chief Quebuah down to Melasona. And our family's piece of property goes from the Elik Bridge, and from the Elik Bridge up to where the entrance to the seminary is, right? It's...how do you say? When we looked at it, when her mom died and we were subdividing the properties for the families, they had to carve out...the surveyor had to carve out what was taken. It amounts to 11,000-plus square meters, and so we looked at that, we looked at her estate, and in her estate... able to find information, there was some kind of an action taken for the condemnation of land. And what I saw was a, there was a written expression that monies for the taking of the land will be deposited in the U.S. District Court. From there, it was empty. We don't, I don't know how to go into the U.S. District Court, but from there, there's no indication that the money was deposited. The paper expressed that there was going to be a deposit for the land-taking. So the amount was in the hundreds, if I recall. I mean, I have the documents. We just heard about this this afternoon, so we can always bring the documents in later, right? But if you're looking at 11,000 square meters of land taken, and it's going to be in the hundreds, I'm not sure that's possible nowadays, or even back then when it was supposedly taken. So I called Marion. I said, "I heard on the radio that you folks are going to listen to try and address this situation." And I know you have to go through, I mean, we have to put our paperwork together, make sure that we're, the situation is what we're just expressing. So I guess we're here to support the effort. Here?
Yes. Yeah. She says.
That's it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Ada. Mrs. Ada, did you want to add to?
No, that's fine. He pretty much covered everything.
Thank you again for your testimony this evening. Vice Speaker Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, Senator Rodriguez sponsored the bill. Mike Olson, Senator Randlewood, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morrison and Vice Speaker, thank you, ladies, for the opportunity. I strongly believe, according to the U.S. Constitution, that no private property shall be taken without just compensation. That's in the Constitution of the United States. And somehow, people for the last 20-some years completely ignored these rights, not only the Constitution, but also the public law that was passed back during my time, Mr. Chairman. And this public law, 22-93, has everything. It has the history. And I don't want to read it. I just want to ask you senators to go through with it, and read why I introduced it. Read what Inspector General said then, back 21 years ago, and read the recommendation or the obligation of the Governor of Guam. I know that the Governor vetoed my bill, but it was overwritten. It is important, and somehow, I feel, it's a kind of feeling, for 21 years, questioning myself, why? Why did it take this long to pay, compensate Chamorro's landowners? Route 1 Marine Drive, Route 16, and Route 15 were paid by the federal government. I remember Route 50, because our land was dissected by the back road, and I remembered seeing a figure of $5 for a coconut tree. But though only those who were compensated were paid by the federal government, when the federal government turned over the jurisdiction of this situation, it was, at the time, I don't want to repeat it, Inspector General. At the time, what did you put there, monster? Let me try again. At the time, Inspector General estimated $73 million that had to be compensated. If you're going to do it today, be ready to pay over $150 to $200 million. You're all aware that there's a class action suit at the District Court, and there will be a hearing on the same issue. How it will turn out, I'm pretty sure that the District Court will look at the violation of the constitutional rights of the Chamorro people. But I don't know how long it will take, I'm not really sure. But that's going on. We've got new legislation beholden, introduced to address this issue. Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, there might be a further deliberation in the roundtable discussion to include the administration and everybody else in trying to resolve the issue. We don't want any political battle, any further delay. It's total injustice, Gadsden, Pecan Moruta, Safanae. Why? Why have our leaders been sitting around, not paying attention to this issue where Chamoros are being denied and being abused as far as private property rights? And I ask you, dear people, to please read public law, the one that I introduced 21 years ago, and discuss it with the intent of Senator Rodriguez's bill, and any other bill or solution. And of course, at the same time, you need to check on the status of the class action suit. The class action suit, if he wins the case, Attorney Curtis Van De Waal, will be applied to every landowner on Guam whose property have been taken without compensation for roads, schools, waterworks, GPA, Route 4, and all the other roads who will be affected by that legislation, I mean, by that court action. You know, we, sometime, we've got to sit back, Gadsden, and try to figure out all these injustices against the Chamoros. Testify, fina gaga! Fina gaga, Gadsden! On matsulita no, private property used by this government. Datiman ma papa si, godzima man pa papa si a tax, si gavima tax. Man ma na na di, ma papa si sa man malingo. Bula guini abuse, Gadsden. De Samoruta, they're not speaking out, or Safanae, na papa man lo ni lawyer, to fight for this. When we have this government, we have the senators, we have governors, for the last 20 years, completely ignored this issue. And I'm glad, and I'm very happy, that people are beginning to take interest. And I hope, many of our parents have died, and I ask the younger generation, the younger generation, to get involved with this issue. Go to public talks, read the bills, see your senators, and fight for your land. Don't just sit back, please. We should have the younger generation taking over now. You've got to do it. We've got to do it. You know what I'm saying? You've got to do it. Do it before election time. Because there, you have been able to expose, now people are there watching television and talking, and all those are testifying. Even Ken, younger former student, they have big properties that have been taken by government. They're going to start talking about the value of land. They're going to start talking about the injustice. And the young people, those are the universities, anywhere, should be interested to take care of this problem, and fight, and fight for your land. Please, do it for the sake of your parents, your grandpas, and great-grandparents. Because if you had to really go back to the history of the injustice of the land, of the Chamorro land, all the abuse, I think we should be ashamed of what we've done to our own Chamoros. All I'm asking is that let us try to restore pride, let us try to restore this injustice. Let us make the younger generation, the new people, are willing to tackle this problem and resolve it, and have them recognize that they own this rotten island. They own land. Land, Gadsden, is our culture. Bear in mind, some of our people are begging for Chamorro land trust. They can't even get it now. But this is the issue that U.S. senators, I'm not talking about election, but between now and election, this situation of this problem of land must be taken seriously and addressed accordingly. I know there are other people who don't want to do this, either afraid or have vested interests. There are other individuals out there who like to grab lands. There were a lot of our lands were taken illegally. There's so many injustices that have been done to this island. So it's time, Gadsden, that we restore the Chamorro pride, restore the Chamorro culture by giving them or compensating every Chamorro for every square meter, taking care, taking into the public use by this government after transferring from the naval government. Lanny, that thing's working. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I got a group of students waiting for me, so I'm pretty sure they want me to cut short. But please, take care of this. Take care of agriculture, or local products, buy local produce. That's against my legislation 20 years ago. Compensate the farmers, pay their products, buy their products. Again, this is awful, the Chamorro good, with the welfare of these are Chamoros. And yet, somehow, they, some of our leaders, completely, completely up to this point, they listen to the radio about our land, about our agriculture products, and all this other stuff. So let's show our people that we're concerned about the welfare, and that we're going to do something about it. And we're going to make this island proud. And I want you to make the Chamorro proud, restore their pride, restore their integrity, make them feel that they are part of this island, and that this government will take care of them. And I feel that it starts with you senators. Lanny Lee, Senator Mossi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for listening. And Vice Speaker, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Randlewood, my prime minister, Senator Randlewood. And of course, my chagrin, Senator Rodriguez. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for this opportunity. Senator Mossi.
Senator Mossi, it's my Vice Speaker Nelson. To everyone who provided testimony this evening and who showed up at the public hearing, I want to extend our appreciation and our thanks for participating in this process. The committee will continue to accept testimony, written testimony, for the subsequent 10 days from today. I apologize, I did not give the sponsor an opportunity to ask questions if you would like. You're good? Any other senators? If not, this concludes this public hearing, but the committee will continue to receive written testimony for the subsequent 10 days.
Mr. Chair.
We will, based on the suggestion, either proceed with a markup session on this particular legislation or roundtable discussion, so that, in fact, the sponsor of the legislation, the primary sponsor, can have maximum participation and involvement. I'd like to also recognize that the Director of Department of Land Management is in the audience, and I want to thank you, Mr. Bora, for submitting your written testimony, and also for being here and listening to some of the statements that have been presented in this public hearing. Also, Mayor Jesse Gogwi from Chalapago, thank you very much, Mayor, for assisting us in getting the word out to our mayors island-wide, and ensuring that testimony is provided. Yes, Senator Espada?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to make sure that those who are interested in submitting written testimony, there has been some, I guess, misinterpretation of what the 10 days is. And so I'd like to just make that clear, and I'll ask you the question, Mr. Chair. Are we talking 10 working days? Are we talking 10 calendar days?
We are, on behalf of the committee, we are speaking about 10 working days.
Thank you. And the only reason I --
10 days from today.
So two weeks, in essence.
Yes.
And the reason why I bring that up, because I, myself, was faced with the same dilemma, where there was a public hearing during the AAA process, and I was told 10 days. And I believed it was 10 working days, and I was told it was 10 calendar days. So the question was, was my testimony allowed at that time? Of course, I fought for my testimony to be entered, and so I just want to make that clear for everybody, that now everybody's clear on the same page, that it'll be 10 working days. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, and thank you very much for bringing that up. In the interim, like I shared with everyone, we will proceed with a markup meeting or a roundtable discussion. If we do have a roundtable discussion, then it will be televised, so that, in fact, the public can also directly listen to some of the testimony and some of any proposed amendments that will be provided in this measure. So this concludes this hearing. I thank you all again for joining us.